Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, May 31st, 2006, and we are in City Council chambers, John Ferraro Council chambers, here in room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except the first Friday of the month, we meet in our Van Nuys City Hall. We invite folks to come down here for public testimony, either for our general public comment, or on items that have been agendized to take comments from the public. Our agendas are available at www.lacity.org, our city's homepage. We're being broadcast live on Channel 35, and we are rebroadcast in the evening, so we welcome our viewers from Channel 35. We are also available through our city's homepage again, la-city.org, where there is live webcast, and you can get streaming video there at our city's homepage as well. So wealth of information on our city departments, the workings of the City Council, Mayor's Office, City Attorney, and City Controller's Office. We invite folks also to give public testimony through our remote facility in Van Nuys, if that's closer to where you live. You can go to Van Nuys, and our City Department of Information Technology can help you out there to testify, and we will hear your testimony here downtown in City Hall. We're looking at expanding that as well. We currently have nine members, which is one shy of a quorum, or two-thirds of 15 members, to begin our meeting. No number of council members were just with the mayor, as he signed this year's budget that the council passed, and we are waiting one more member. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin this meeting. Thank you all very much. I want to publicly thank council members that are here, Council members Han, Wizar, Laban, Chupedia, Parks, Rosenthal, Weiss, Wesson, and ask Councilmember Zine and Councilmember Rule to join us as soon as you can. As soon as one of them is here, we will begin. (Music) 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 Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, May 31st, 2006, and we are in City Council chambers, John Ferraro Council chambers, here in room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except the first Friday of the month, we meet in our Van Nuys City Hall. We invite folks to come down here for public testimony, either for our general public comment, or on items that have been agendized to take comments from the public. Our agendas are available at www.lacity.org, our city's homepage. We're being broadcast live on Channel 35, and we are rebroadcast in the evening, so we welcome our viewers from Channel 35. We are also available through our city's homepage again, la-city.org, where there is live webcast, and you can get streaming video there at our city's homepage as well. So wealth of information on our city departments, the workings of the City Council, Mayor's Office, City Attorney, and City Controller's Office. We invite folks also to give public testimony through our remote facility in Van Nuys, if that's closer to where you live. You can go to Van Nuys, and our City Department of Information Technology can help you out there to testify, and we will hear your testimony here downtown in City Hall. We're looking at expanding that as well. We currently have nine members, which is one shy of a quorum, or two-thirds of 15 members, to begin our meeting. No number of council members were just with the mayor, as he signed this year's budget that the council passed, and we are waiting one more member. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin this meeting. Thank you all very much. (Music) I want to publicly thank council members that are here, Councilmembers Han, Wizar, Laban, Chupedia, Parks, Rosenthal, Weiss, Wesson, and ask Councilmember Zine and Councilmember Rule to join us as soon as you can. As soon as one of them is here, we will begin. (Music) 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 Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardiness Grohl, Han, Wizar, Laban, Chupedia, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be unanimously approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wizar moves, and Mr. Rosenthal seconds. If there's no objection, that too will be unanimously approved.
And, Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Let's run through the agenda, and just call that, "I'm special," and then we'll go back to public comment.
The first item requires no action, and that was a placeholder for the mayor's veto, if there was one.
Okay, no action required on that, so we have five days, colleagues, upon the receipt of this veto, to overcome some action. Why don't we hold that on the table? Next items?
Next items are items noticed for public hearings. Items 2, 4, 6, and 7 are confirmations of building and safety liens.
Okay, let's hold the confirmations on the table, please.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. President, those are confirmations of liens. So if there are no-
Oh, the liens, I'm sorry. Does anybody wish to call any of these special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are also building and safety liens, and the department has advised that those matters can be received and filed. On item number 3, the lien has been paid, and on item number 5, there is a new owner who is not responsible for the costs.
Okay, so we will receive and file those two. If there's no objection, let's take those together. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, 8, 9, and 10 are street vacations in Council District 4, and if there are no protests, the council can instruct the city engineer to proceed with the vacations.
Are there any protests of the vacations? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote, please.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 11 through 28, items 11, 12, and 13 are confirmations of commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold that. And there's one other one, 29, is that correct?
Yes, and that's in the next section.
Okay, we'll wait on that one, okay. Let's hold those three on the desk. Colleagues, any? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, and that would leave for Council 14 through 27.
Okay, 14 through 27, Ms. Han?
17.
17 for Ms. Han. Are there specials, colleagues? Seeing none, why don't we wait on... Are we expected to have 12 members?
No, Mr. President, I don't believe so.
Okay, so why don't we open the roll on the balance, then? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those will be approved, except for the ordinances, which will carry over.
And, Mr. President, oh, sorry. Also, just to let council know, there is a request to continue item number 28 for one week to June 20... Excuse me, June 7th.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to the continuance? Mr. Parks?
Fourth with.
Okay, we'll go fourth with on 27, and if there's no objection to continuing item 28, we will do that until June 7th. Okay, next items, please.
Next items are items to which public hearings have not been held, items 29 through 46. 10 votes are required for consideration, and item number 29 is a confirmation.
Let's hold 29 on the table. I forgot to mention, let's go fourth with on 18 and 19, too, if there's no objection on the earlier ones. And now, colleagues, any specials from 30 to 46? Mr. Laban?
Thank you, Mr. President, number 44.
Item 44 for Mr. Laban. Mr. Parks?
And, Mr. President, there are cards, I'm sorry, on items 30 and 45.
3-0, 30, or 38?
I'm sorry, 30, I believe, and 45.
And 45. Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. Other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's take the balance, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. And next items?
Next items, 47 and 48 are closed sessions. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold those both on the desk. Okay.
And that would take council back to the items called special.
Okay, now it's time for general public comment. Let's see if we can go back to those. I'd like to invite forward, first, starting in Van Nuys, we have an individual out there, Bruce Darian. If we can go to our Van Nuys facility and take his testimony, two minutes, Mr. Darian, welcome.
Thank you, President Garcetti of the City Council. My name is Bruce Darian. I'm here at Van Nuys facility to talk about the recent ruling of yesterday of the Supreme Court, and how it affects revealing government corruption, and how that pertains to myself as a whistleblower, United States Federal Court of six years, under Florence Marie Cooper. There's been more than 300 lawyers, 50 law firms, and 35 court cases affecting the Malibu Pier. It's been a cover-up for the last six years. It's why the pier continues to stay closed, the businesses, and much of the pier was closed for the last 12 years. I invite the public to participate in letting your senators and congressmen know that you're not happy with this decision, that it fosters corruption within government by relying on your superiors to expose corruption, which most of the time, a whistleblower is retaliated against, as I have been for the last six years. There were false arrests, police reports that were falsified, tainting and spoiling of evidence, obstruction of justice, lying on State Park's contracts, change orders, falsification of stop notices, and 20-day preliminary notices. Cal OSHA reports have been falsified, Contractors Board investigations falsified, and Department of Cal OSHA and General Services reports have all been falsified. As a whistleblower, I'm asking the public, now's the time to step up to the plate. Those of you that believe that there's internal corruption which is stifling our country, you must do something about it, and I invite you to go to malibu-pier-scandal.com to see where I've been over the years to some degree, and we'll be introducing more evidence and documentation as we go along. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is here in City Hall, Alisa Vina. Anselmo Lopez, Anuel Garay, Federico Vargas, Luis Morales, Lucila Delgado, Maria Vina, from the South Central Farmers. Welcome.
Buenos dias, señores y señoras. Estamos aquí, mis compañeros y yo, para en representación de las 350 familias del sur centro, de los jardines del sur centro de Los Ángeles, en Alameda y 41. Para traerles un saludo y-
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anselmo Lopez. We're here representing the rest of my colleagues, and also representing the rest of 350 families that currently garden at the South Central Farm, which is located at Alameda and 41st. We're here to bring your greetings and-
Para recordarles que nosotros hemos estado ahí por los últimos más de 14 años protegiendo el área verde, y nuestro propósito es que nos ayuden para continuar.
I'd like to remind you that we've been there for over 14 years. We've been there protecting our green space, and our purpose is to ask you to assist us so we can continue protecting this green area.
Sabemos bien que las grandes ciudades necesitan aire puro. Nuestra lucha es solamente para mantener el área verde que es bien para la gran ciudad.
We know that a lot of big cities such as ours need more clean air. Our struggle basically is to continue maintaining clean air for our big, beautiful city.
Muchas gracias.
Buenos dias. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Federico Vargas. Venimos representando el sur centro y Alameda porque queremos que nos den una ayuda para que consere, que siga el jardín ahí verde.
Good morning. My name is Federico Vargas. We're here representing South Central in Alameda, and we're asking for your assistance so we can continue there with the green space.
Porque todos los que están retirados vivemos ahí alrededor, y queremos que nuestra familia también, las familias que van, nuestros hijos y toda la familia viven ahí alrededor.
A lot of us are retired, and we live in the surrounding area. Our families also go there, and our families, and also other retirees, we go to that place. We live in the surrounding area.
Y por eso les pedimos que continúen ese lugar verde. Gracias.
That's why we ask your assistance so that we can continue farming on that green space. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt, and then Candida Maris.
All right, all right. Good morning. Let's get the kids a little hooty-hoo. Shout out to the kids now. Bernard Parks, you got to deal with the hooty-hoo, man. I'm the real one, baby. Bill Rosenthal, big ups to you with the elderly thing yesterday. I think that Lincoln Park deserves a lot better. You fly me out to Denver. We have an elderly retreat right there at Lincoln Place. I guarantee you, we have an elderly retreat right there, all for the elderly. They'll be putting in palm trees and swimming pools by the time I finish with them. Now, my next thing is, Bill, we still got this 4215 here. Here's what I got to ask you. In my jury trial, they tried to change the ordinance. Can you help me out here? I mean, right in the middle of the jury trial, they tried to change the ordinance. Explain that to me. If the city council or the city attorney can't explain it, or can't do it right, help me out here. How do they enforce something that they don't even understand? Well, you know the Ninth Circuit's going to overturn it, baby, so that's a good thing. Now, Bernard Parks, hey, look, 45, Agenda 45. Me, you, and Ms. Perry, I'm ready for you guys. I can answer all the questions. I think that First Amendment should be protected, especially in a public and a city place, and I think you guys got to fight, because the N-word is actually in the dictionary. So I don't think it should be paused. I don't think it should be caused. I don't think it should be none of that. I think it should be the truth. If you validate somebody's First Amendment rights, like they did you in 2000 when they fired you, I mean, I would really, I would really be appalled to people speaking their first mind, you know, and whatever the cause is, you know, it's not a good one, because everybody deserves to work. And Bill Rosenthal, you know, we need to go back and revisit. I'm going to be at the center on the 6th with you. I'm gonna be at the center on the 6th with you at Oakwood. So, you know, all of my fans and everything, they say, well, you went to jail for us 24 times. You know, hey, they look at me as a hero, like Nelson Mandela, Dr. King, or somebody. 45, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Candida Maris is our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President, Council members. Once again, I want to thank you for the young kids back there from Marshall High. They do a great job. I always forget a pen, and they always have one for me. So, again, thank you guys very much. I, too, am here because of today's newspaper, public workers' rights at stake, court ruling hits, whistleblowers. And I'm here to apologize. I'm here to apologize to the wonderful DWP workers who I promised back in 2004 and 2005 that if they stepped forth and brought forth corruption and waste that they wouldn't be retaliated against. And so I hope they'll forgive me for that, because that never happened. They were retaliated, some lost their jobs. But I want to say to them that because of your braveness, we were able to end a contract, a janitorial contract, that is now saving us hundreds of thousands of dollars. The missed discounts that the department was missing, if you take a look at it, it's over $2.5 million that the ratepayers now are saving. The bidding net where they had spent over $10 million wastefully is now being put out to bid, and you will see that that bidding net will now probably cost us about half a million dollars when they had spent over $10 million. So again, I apologize to all the good DWP workers and all the city workers. You know, even after through all this that we've gone through, it is worth it, because when you don't sell your soul for money, it's the most wonderful feeling that you can have in the world, because when you do the right thing, it's just something that stays with you. So, again, I want to thank all those wonderful workers who spoke the truth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maris. That closes our general public comment for this meeting. We can return to the agenda. And first item, please.
First item before Council is item number 11, and that's confirmation of Mr. Richard Montoya to the Cultural Affairs Commission.
Mr. Montoya, be kind enough to come forward. Welcome, and congratulations. Any of the chairs want to go to the center one. And I want to recognize Mr. Labonge, I know has just stepped aside from the committee that oversees you, but maybe Mr. Padilla would open our comments first? Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I say a few words, I do rise in support of the appointee before us, but wanted to give you, Richard, an opportunity to just talk to the Council, tell us why you're interested in this particular commission spot, what experience you have, what you know and love about Los Angeles that is gonna help in this capacity.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla, and Council President Garcetti. I walked here this morning from my home in Angelino Heights, and I just kinda wanted to walk through the city early in the morning, cross Del Camino Real, known as the Hollywood Freeway, and headed towards the cathedral, and then to the City Hall. And I just wanted to remind myself of the love that I do have for the city. I've been here more than 12 years, and feel like an Angelino now. And I just was thinking of so many people before me, C. Bernard Jackson, Duane Ibbata, Sister Karen Boccolero. These are arts giants of Los Angeles that I will tell any kid that will listen of their contribution to the city. And I think it's a deep love. Council President Garcetti, I saw at Tex Restaurant a couple weeks ago with a pretty rowdy crowd that was held and rapped because of your love of the history and knowledge of this town, the multicultural promise of the town and its beginnings, and the arroyos and the rivers, and it just reminded me very much of my own work with our group, whether it's a play about Chavez Ravine, or The Missions, or whatever it might be, and that we get to perform for tens of thousands of high school kids throughout the city. I just, I share that love and that concern, and it's almost a cliche to some, enriching the lives of every Angelino, but I really think that that is so much of the mission of the Cultural Affairs and the Cultural Affairs Commission. When Mayor Villarrealgoza mentioned the Watts Towers in his inaugural address, it was an important cue for us culture makers that the mayor shares a passion and a love and a knowledge of what arts and culture can do for every Angelino. So I just, I walked to town today just to humble myself and this great honor to hopefully serve and be tapped and to volunteer for some issues I feel very strongly about. And I've spent some time with Director Marjorie Reese at the DCA, and we took a look at the master plan, Arts and Culture Master Plan for the city, and it's over a decade old. And I think we all share an urgency to re-articulate what the master plan for the city might be as it relates to arts and culture, and how we can enrich the lives of young people and fill up our universities instead of our jails, and so many important things. And Director Reese was very kind and generous with her time. I did have to pay a $21 parking ticket. Their validation doesn't work anymore, but I'll work that out. I mention that because I am a working artist, and I think I can bring some energy to the table of my fellow commissioners and bring some new ideas, but I'm really thrilled to be here this morning.
Well, I appreciate what you shared, and colleagues, wanted, like I said, rise in support of confirmation here. I'm just glad the mayor picked you for this spot, because I've known you for several years now, and you're not just an artist bringing the artistic viewpoint to this important commission, but the socially conscious viewpoint that I know you have. Colleagues, we debate around the horseshoe, particularly during budget time, about budget for potholes in streets and sidewalks and streetlights and sort of the nuts and bolts things that we need to take care of as a city. Public safety, public safety infrastructure, other things that make our city mechanically function. But it isn't until we look at issues like the arts, like culture, like social awareness and activism, that we bring to life the city of Los Angeles and the people of Los Angeles. And so this commission and every artist in the city has that important role to play. And so whether it's issues really local to Los Angeles, like the Department of Water and Power, or greater issues like the history of this country and the origins of the United States of America as we know it. I know you have tackled it both as a historian and as an artist, and I can't tell you how important what you do as a struggling artist is to the future of Los Angeles, because of all those kids in our schools who look at you, who look up to you, and who are sparked by your art. So thank you for bringing that to the people of Los Angeles, and now thank you for your service to the city. And I'm glad you clarified that you've been here for 12 years now, and you're trying to dispel that myth that you're a Hurricane Katrina refugee that found your way to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Labonge is Chair of the Committee. Would you like to...
No, no, I just think it's wonderful when someone accepts an appointment to the Cultural Heritage Commission, when someone lives in the first district and the first neighborhood of the city in Angelino Heights, and then someone wakes up on a day like today and walks to work. I just want to know, do you stop and make a confession when you pass the cathedral?
No, but I had to stop and pick up a check at the Mark Taper form.
Oh, good, no, that's good. Either way.
I wondered, it was longer than I thought it would be. It's a good walk.
No, I appreciate your history, growing up in Southern California and up in the state Capitol, living in Los Angeles for over 20 years, being an artist yourself, know how tough it is to be an artist. And I only got, like to ask you, is remember the tough times in your own experience to try to make it easier for those who come behind you as artists and make it like a farmer field, you know, where you could make it grow for others, because that's what the talent of an artist, to help them out, and that commission to be more vocal. We do have to fund the arts more. There is a component, members, that are so important. So I thank you for your service. And someone's going out towards my district, he'll give you a ride if you want at home afterward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And don't worry, that confession thing was a rhetorical question. Mr. Wezar is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, and just want to stand up and thank you, Mr. Montoya, for the contributions you've given to the arts. Your perspective has been a very valuable one, one that is not often heard, and you've really brought it to the forefront in the number of projects you've been involved with. I see your partner in crime is here in the audience, giving you some support, so it's great to see her here. I just have one simple question. We have some young people here, we have young people probably watching this. What advice would you give to young people, particularly young people of color, on entering the arts, entering, doing the type of work you've been doing?
That's always a tough one, Councilmember Wezar, because I think that students are so inundated with MTV and our youth-driven culture, which is an important part of American culture, but, you know, every now and then, something like Hurricane Katrina does remind us that there are so many important things about America that we need to be reminded of. And I think young kids, when we talk to high school or college kids, they know that what Brittany and Federline are doing matters zero to their lives. If we see bodies floating down the main streets of New Orleans, that means something to us. So to the youngsters here, number one, I'm so glad that you're here and you got up early and you're joining us, but pay attention to our history. I think Council President Garcetti held a young rock and roll crowd in the palm of his hand, because the origins of this city can tell us where we might be going. So people always say, how can I write a play? What should I do? Pick up a camcorder or a recording device and go talk to your grandmother, or your grandfather, or your aunt and your uncle, and hear their story, and hear it over and over again, and find out how they got to Los Angeles and what that roadmap is, and then that'll determine or help inform what their roadmap for the future is. So instead of sitting at your computer or your laptop trying to make up things, there's so many enriching things around us that we can just soak up as students. I still consider myself a student, so I would just pay attention to history and, of course, stay in that all-important school and just keep writing and performing and do the things that you want to do.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to serving you and you contributing your unique perspective to this commission. Mr. Padilla asked me to ask you, how was it possible to walk to City Hall and get a parking ticket as well, since you've mentioned both 30 years? Thank you very much.
Well, when I went to DCA the other day, I got lost in Chinatown. I felt like Jack Nicholson, but I parked in the wrong place, suffice to say.
It's Chinatown, Richard, it's Chinatown. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Very happy to see you here. What's your thoughts about putting together this master plan? Like your thoughts about looking at the future of what we need to do and using your expertise and your professionalism to help us move in that direction?
Great question. It's a thick document, and I've taken more than a cursory glance at it, the areas that I would like to possibly contribute and help articulate for the next couple of years would be those areas of education and music, theater, in the schools as a way of enriching our young people. I see kids incarcerated, I visit them, I spend, we spend time, my group Culture Clash, some of the members are here today, and I just see kids at kind of a loss, and I just don't know that that master plan written in '91, '92, hell, well, it just needs a little bit of an updating to maybe serve an ever-changing metropolis, as you all know better than I. You know, I just think of maybe the next Frank Gehry is a young Korean girl in Mid-Wilshire, maybe the next Rodeo is a young surfer kid, a skateboarder, maybe the next person that we need to find to build our next Watts Towers. You know, that person might be in second, third, or fourth, or fifth grade right now. And I just would like to see the master plan. And I know that Director Reese shares that concern also, and the mayor, of course, the urgency to re-articulate a master plan that is maybe a little bit more inclusive of a community that's maybe changed since '91 and '92.
I think you're absolutely right, and I think your leadership and fresh eyes, fresh energy, looking at an old plan like that, bring it into the 21st century is critical for us. And I also believe that, you know, arts is not an enriching thing, it's a critical part of the being. You know, we become who we are through a combination of things. I mean, the book learning is one thing, but arts and culture and music and dance is part of our human expression abilities. And so if we can tie them both together and make them as essential, then we're going really down the right path. The other day, the President's Commission on Arts were here, the head of the National Endowment was here, we welcomed them to this great city, and they clearly said to us, Los Angeles is the vibrant, alive, creative capital of the planet. It was good to hear other people saying that. And again, I applaud Mayor Villarrealgoza for putting you in this position, and we look forward to your leadership on the commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenthal. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Bit of urgency, from enriching to absolutely essential. You're so right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Padilla?
Just to close, Richard, I'm glad to see that after all these years, you're no longer confused, but you're just as full of rage. Thank you.
Thanks for remembering, Councilmember Padilla. MIT, go.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and thank you, Mr. Montoya, for putting yourself forward. Had I known you were at Tex, I might have gotten stage fright, but I appreciate the kind comments and...
You're great.
That may be the first and last performance there, but thank you for putting yourself forward and for all you've done for the city. And with that, the big moment has come, so if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next items, 12 and 13, are confirmations of reappointments to the Rent Adjustment Commission.
Okay. Ask the commissioners to come forward, please? How we take both of these together? Both of come forward? And Mr. Wesson is Chair of Housing Committee. Would you like to open the comments?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. We had a hearing, I don't know if you were there, not too long ago, and we really didn't have the opportunity to ask detailed questions of Jeff and Ref. But we did talk, they're committed, and they're very impressive. Their enthusiasm and commitment to the city of Los Angeles, I think, is just so apparent. It is appropriate that we unanimously confirm their recommendations, their appointments. I will be voting yes and ask my other colleagues to do the same.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Wesson. So glad both of you have agreed to serve on this Rent Adjustment Commission. If you followed our discussions in the last several weeks and months, issues of rent control, issues in Mr. Rosenthal's district, condo convert, all of this has to do with creation of affordable housing and rental issues. And I know in the last committee meeting of the Rent Adjustment Commission, a lot of tenants from my district appeared at that meeting as well. And tonight, if you're not doing anything, we will be in my district at Valley College, the joint meeting that Mr. Reyes and Mr. Wesson have scheduled tonight, and so I expect hundreds of people talking tonight about their plight. And so it's very, your role is very important as we move forward on this issue, and appreciate, Ms. Rodriguez, we've not had a chance to really meet and talk, but I look forward to working with you, and I wanted to say some nice words about Jeff Dar, who I have worked with over the years, and pleased that you're on a commission and can use your experience and your legal experience particularly to add to that commission, and look forward to you letting us know where we can make some changes. We, looking at, yesterday, we talked about some of the state law, which I think, again, that we all need to look at, where there's conflicting legislation that does not protect the tenants that we think are so critically important. So I just wanted to stand up and say thank you. We're ready for you to begin and to roll up your sleeves on some issues that are impacting us. So I just want to say congratulations and thank you for your commitment, and Jeff, nice to see you today, too.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah. We got Ref, and we have Jeff. That's kind of a combo there. Gentlemen, tell me, what do you see your role on the Rent Adjustment Commission? What is your mission, both of you, for being on this commission? What do you hope to accomplish?
Personally, for me, the last time I was here, several months ago, was I spoke a little bit about my own background and my parents' immigrant origins and the fact that we, before buying into the American dream, which was the purchase of their first home, we did rent in the city of Los Angeles, and how important and critical it was for our parents to be able to find affordable housing, not only as a way for equity in terms of living, but also in terms of being able to then save to be able to purchase part of the American dream. And so my role and my mission is to continue to allow people to have that opportunity that my parents had, as well as, one of the important things that I think this commission does has to do with the Appeals Board... does has to do with the appeals board, with REAP and some of the other things that we have to consider, and letting citizens act as an arbitration, act as a place where people can come to and hear their cases, is a very important role, something I take very seriously being part of this commission, and it's something that I want to continue to be able to develop and learn from people like Jeff about how, to be fair and equitable, is making decisions for the general managers, decisions that have been made, and they come to us in their appeal, so.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And a very good question. And by the way, it's been very enjoyable having the honor to be able to work with my fellow Commissioner, Ref, says the Ref and Jeff team.
Yeah, the team, I like the energy around it.
I've now been on the commission for a number of years, sometime since, I think, 2003, and my reason for wanting to be on the commission in the first place was to try to make a real impact on trying to make certain that affordable housing through the rent stabilization ordinance and other laws that we have, ordinances we have in the city, are working fairly for everybody. As a commissioner, I've been very proactive, and very proactive, I think, in helping change the Rent Adjustment Commission so that it does what it's supposed to do effectively and justly. Upon my being appointed a couple of years ago, it was instrumental in having an internal review committee formed in order to start reexamining everything we do, from our fairly lengthy regulations, to our appeals process, to our internal working roles, and that committee has met every other week and continues to meet two years later, I believe now, every other week.
Great.
And we're still sitting here going through this. We've been very proactive in, I think, making the commission very user-friendly for members of the public, the constituents of this city. When people come before us, they, I hope, and I think we are accomplishing this, they believe they're being heard, they're being responded to their needs, and we're addressing their needs. When this council has asked the Rent Adjustment Commission to promulgate, for example, regulations for the primary renovation ordinance, we spent months and months and months and held detailed hearings, and as a result, came up with, for example, well over twenty, thirty pages of regulations, and when they were enacted by the commission, not a single dissent. So, in that sense, I think we really are making a dent, and my continued interest is in trying to make the commission as proactive and responsible to make sure that with the tools we have, and whatever additional tools we should be having, the city does provide a place for people to actually be able to live in an affordable means, and at the same time, provide a just and reasonable return for the owners of the property.
Well, it's a good point, because that's the big issue. In my district, the eleventh district, as you might know, we're the ocean district, the coastal district. We're thrilled to be there, and we're grateful to be there, but fifty percent of my constituents are renters, and many of them have nice rental opportunities, but they're losing that opportunity due to the Ellis Act, which allows a developer to come in, say they're getting out of the rental business, and demolish the buildings and build high-end condos. How do we protect the middle class who are in affordable housing now so that they can stay in affordable housing now? What can we do? Any thoughts, either of you?
Well, one of the things that our commission does do, by the way, is make quarterly reports to this council, which includes recommendations. Sort of a general answer to, I think, a very serious and very difficult question to answer simply, is going to, I think, primarily start with focusing on preserving the housing stock we do have, because if that is depleted as it is right now, where do those people go?
Right.
And they aren't going to be able to live in this city. People who work in this city won't be able to live here. It'll become a city of just the privileged, and it will not be representative of the people in this council chamber. So, I think, starting with preservation of housing stock has got to be our first, probably primary mission, and then with regard to the Ellis Act, it's a state law, of course, so we have to be respectful of laws that are state laws, but to the extent that we can work with it and influence how to maintain affordable housing, and at the same time, not lose where we are right now, and hopefully gain, is, I think, the focus we need to take.
Have you looked at Santa Monica and some of the things they do?
One of the things that our commission regularly does, and, for example, we are tomorrow going to be re, we're going to be amending our regulation that we have that deals with rent increase where you have a reduction in housing services, so the rent doesn't go up, but you have an effective rent increase because the housing services are now less than what you were getting for your agreed-upon rent under the ordinance. When we are, hopefully tomorrow, redoing this, the results of a totally redone regulation includes careful examination of all of the California other sister-city ordinances, and we're borrowing and taking from those as appropriate. So, for example, in this regulation tomorrow, we're going to be having valuations in it to aid the Housing Department in determining how to make a corresponding rent reduction to adjust for essentially what's an illegal rent increase without increasing the price, and we are taking that from some of the other local ordinances, Santa Monica, West Hollywood, the idea, which we didn't have before in the city of Los Angeles. We've also looked at in other regulations, such as primary renovation, other states' cities, like New York and elsewhere, so we have tried to not limit ourselves to what we have and to try to look outside of our world and be creative, and I'm hoping we could do a lot more of that.
I think you're exactly right, and I invite both of you to come to the West Side Municipal Government Association, which I'm part of, which is Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, Santa Monica, and Culver City, and give them an appreciation of where we are at and where they are, because we can obviously learn from each other on that issue. But if I can leave you with one impression, it's this: Affordable housing that does exist now is threatened, and we have to come up with a strategy to preserve it, and I look to leadership from both of you in helping us on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we can just hold this on the table for one moment while we have twelve members, colleagues, we're going to take up the ordinances again so they don't go to a second reading. If we can please reconsider all the ordinances except for seventeen. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
And if nobody wishes to call those special, we'll take a vote on them again. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. If we can return to the two items that were before us, and our next speaker is Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, and I think these are two wonderful reappointments to the commission. I wanted to just underline the points that Mr. Rosendahl raised, and I think this commission could really kind of step up front in this time when the city is struggling and finding a way to create a housing policy that protects affordable housing, promotes it. This commission could really, I think, play a heightened role in discussion in that, role in that discussion. So, with you two on there, I've known both of you for some time now, and I really highly respect both of you and the work you've done in your respective areas that you work in, so I look forward to continuing working with you on this, and do want to reiterate what Mr. Rosendahl said, but those are some very important things that we should all consider as we go forward, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on these fine commissioners, which I can speak from experience about? Jeff and Ref are now before us, so let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointment, commissioners.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Send that forthwith, please, to the mayor, and if we can take up item seventeen next. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, colleagues. What we have before us is a sort of new ordinance on catering trucks, and I don't know if some of you have the same kinds of issues that I have in my district on catering trucks, but it was brought to my attention, obviously, actually, when I got elected in 2001. I've been working on this ordinance for four years now, but I had heard from some of the restaurants in Wilmington particularly, who were concerned about the amount of time that catering trucks were parked, sometimes right in front of their restaurants, and felt like, you know, they had, you know, paid their business license tax, they were paying their employees living wage, they had gone through the hoops to have legitimate business in Wilmington, and they felt some of these catering trucks were undercutting them and undermining them. So, they asked if there was something we could do to actually ban catering trucks altogether from commercial districts and residential districts. So, when I started this process four years ago, I wanted the city of Los Angeles to have an ordinance that said, you know, no catering truck can remain parked at any residential location for any purpose, and I wanted no catering trucks that were parked at commercial location longer than thirty minutes. That's what I wanted. What we have before us today, and I'm going to have our city attorney, Shelley Smith, tell us why I couldn't have what I wanted, but what we have today is an ordinance that continues to allow catering trucks to be parked in commercial locations for an hour, and, which is what is the current ordinance, and they can remain in residential neighborhoods for thirty minutes, which is the current ordinance. So, you ask, what have we been doing for four years on this ordinance? What we have before us is the amount of time that they have to be away from that location before they can come back. Catering trucks were typically leave, if they could only park for an hour in front of a restaurant, they would leave or drive around the block and come right back. So, we had a problem enforcing it, we had a problem with trash and littering, and so what we've come up today is an ordinance that after the hour parked in front of the restaurant, they must move a half a mile away and then stay away for an hour, and then they can come back. In a residential neighborhood, they can park for thirty minutes, then they must leave half a mile away, and then stay away for thirty minutes, and then they can come back. So, I want to, first of all, hear from the city attorney on why I couldn't have what I wanted, and then I would like to hear from Chief Jimmy Price of our Department of Transportation on why he thinks this is actually an ordinance that will help in a lot of ways and will be easier to enforce. Ms. Smith?
Good morning, councilmembers, and Councilwoman Hahn, Shelley Smith from the city attorney's office. We never like to tell councilmembers they can't have what they want, especially, Councilwoman Hahn. However, state law does impose a lot of limitations and constraints on individual cities and counties' ability to prohibit or ban catering truck operations. They are expressly authorized by the vehicle code. But in working with your staff, Councilwoman, and recognizing the health and safety issues that catering trucks and the prolonged staying of catering trucks can cause neighborhoods, both commercial and residential, what we've done in this ordinance is try to tighten and narrow the regulation for one, so that we can certainly sustain any legal challenge, and for two, so that it can make a practical difference in the communities that are affected by these catering trucks, and we feel that the ordinance before you will do that.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Jimmy.
Chief, why don't you tell us how you think DOT can actually enforce this?
Right. What we've observed about the catering truck problem, whether it's a commercial area or a residential area, is that it does create health and public safety concerns. We've had criminal element hang out around catering trucks and actually rob patrons, and in one instance, one of our officers was even robbed in the proximity of a catering truck in broad daylight. While it is a health and public safety concern, we think what the effective enforcement tool we need is to create turnover, because what drives or what incentivizes the catering truck owner to park at that location is the proximity to his customer base. And so, if we can require that he leave that location for a set period of time and then come back and compete with every other motorist for that parking space, we think that it'll have a direct impact on staking out locations and camping out the entire day, and will create a healthy turnover in those situations, and relieve some of the concerns from the business base as well as the community. We get quite a few complaints in residential areas. What we will be able to do eventually is establish a chronic complaint base, where in advance, we'll know where there are problems, and we'll dispatch members of our Special Operations Division to proactively go out and tag these vehicles and time them and ensure that they're complying with the ordinance, and hopefully, we can bring the situation under control in a balanced, progressive way.
Let me just ask one follow-up, because there are those who would say you're not currently enforcing what's on the books due to lack of personnel or... What comfort can you give me and my constituents that indeed, this is something that DOT will actively monitor and enforce?
Well, we do...
Even with your thin personnel?
Yeah, we do enforce the existing laws, but the problem is, the cost of the citation, I believe, is forty-five dollars, and so what occurs is, is that the owner of the catering truck absorbs the issuance of the citations as the cost of doing business. Even if we issue two or three citations, you can see that that's far cheaper than having to set up a land-based operation, and so there's no incentive for the driver to leave the location other than he's going to get repeated citations. What assurances can we give you? Well, we are going to get additional staff. Effective July one, our staff is going to be increased by roughly five percent, and that's going to allow us to not only address the catering truck issues, but other ancillary duties that we have that sometimes have to be sacrificed for our core mission. And so, we think with the increase in staff, the new ordinance, that we will be in a position to make a difference on this issue.
Is the fine still the same, though?
I believe the fine is still the same. If we feel that enforcement, if Chief Price and his deployment personnel feel that catering trucks are absorbing even these new regulations without modifying behavior, we hope that this will modify behavior, but if it does not, we can rewrite the ordinance to impose tiered penalties, which double or triple once people are found guilty within a twelve-month period of time and get succeeding tickets. That certainly can make a difference as well.
Well, I would like to ask for my colleagues' vote on this today, but I'd also like to have a report back, you know, sometime after this ordinance goes into effect, monitor it for six months, and come back and see whether or not increased tiered fine might also put a little more teeth into this.
That would be fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith, to be followed by Mr. Zine.
Thank you. If you could hold my time, I do my introduction, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Join us today, ladies and gentlemen, in the council, first of all, is a group of students, US History Class from Chatsworth Hill Academy with their teacher, Colin Martin, who are here. Stand up, wave to the television. Come on, everyone, stand up. There you go. Now, wave, because you're going to be on television tonight, Channel 35. Say hello to the folks. We're very happy to have you with us. First of all, being a history class, Chatsworth Hill Academy has a great reputation, is a great academic institution in the Chatsworth, in Southern California area, so we're really happy to have you here, but also, as a history class, most people don't realize that Chatsworth is a very historic community, that the old Wells Fargo wagons used to come through the San Fernando Valley, and there's a Wells Fargo changing station in Chatsworth where they trade the horses off as they headed to Sacramento from the Los Angeles area. So, it's a very historic area. Also, in the hills of Chatsworth, you can find areas where the rocks have been dug out by the Chumash Indians who lived in the area, and that's where they made the clay for the San Fernando Mission and a lot of the missions in Southern California from the clay of the Chatsworth Reservoir. So, great historic community, we're very pleased to have you with us today. Thank you for coming down. On this, now you can start the clock. On this issue, I'm thanking Ms. Hahn for bringing us forward, and it's a complaint I've heard, as she has, from the legitimate residents who own businesses, who own restaurants that they're being competed with, with companies that really don't pay the taxes, a lot of cash transactions, it's very easy not to trace. I concur with her, I'd like to see us move further than we are in this motion, but one question I have, Shelley, is, is there a requirement in this ordinance as far as trash around the truck? Do they have to keep it clean within fifty feet or something like that?
There's no specific geographic limitation, however, the catering truck operators, as the patrons, are responsible for picking up their litter, and again, that's an issue which certainly affects neighborhoods a lot. That's an enforcement issue.
Okay. But that's what we have with an ordinance, is the ability to enforce, but we don't have language in there specifying that they must keep it clean within fifty feet of the truck or anything like that?
This ordinance is in a portion of the municipal code devoted to parking violations, so it is targeted at parking violations. We do have ordinances on the books that clearly prohibit littering, and they can be enforced separately. And should be.
But littering requires an officer of the law to see them commit the crime.
That is correct.
And so, we can't drive up on a, under this ordinance, we don't have the ability to say, under the vehicle code, to drive up and say, "There's trash all around it, you need to clean it up."
Not under this particular ordinance.
Could we write that as a separate ordinance in the municipal ordinances then to coincide with this ordinance somehow?
It would still have to be enforced by a peace officer.
Peace officer, okay. So, we don't have the ability for traffic enforcement to enforce that kind of a...
Not currently, but that's certainly something that we would want to look into and discuss with Chief Price.
I would appreciate if you'd look in it, because one of the biggest complaints I get is that around these trucks, people buy their stuff, in the paper stuff, and just drop it on the ground and leave. Some do a good job, they put trash cans out and they try and police the area, but some don't. They put trash cans out and they try and police the area, but some don't. And so that's a big concern. I'd like you to think about that as we look at, maybe six months from now, we take a second check on this ordinance to see if we can beef it up somehow.
We'll be happy to.
And then the greatest thing, I think, is I, as I look at, not so much my district, but in Mr. Padilla's district, we had a big problem with catering trucks used as drug stores. They're the distribution point for drugs, and there was one in particular that used to park on Sepulveda Boulevard, and it rang its bell all night long, which is an indication that the drug store is open, you could come get your drugs. If the bell wasn't ringing, they knew there were police around the area, and they'd stop selling drugs. So the ability for our traffic enforcement others to see them, be there visibly, stop them, talk to them, brings another level of enforcement and visibility that I think will help that a lot. And so I appreciate the ordinance. I think we need to strengthen it more, and I will be happy to work with Ms. Hahn on that next year. But I will support this now. I think it's an important first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine is our next speaker, to be followed then by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Hi.
This has been a lingering problem for many, many years throughout the city of Los Angeles. In my district, we have restaurants where a catering truck hooked to a pickup truck will park and then detract from the individual who is following all the rules at the restaurant, parked right in front. And we get complaints on that continuously. I've been out with building safety, with the Health Department, to see how serious the problem is. It's very serious. Concern I have, and I want to enforce this as often as possible and make the, shall we say, the fine, a deterrent, what is the current fine structure for these violations?
I believe the fine is $45, Councilman.
$45 is absolutely ridiculous when you look at how much they're making within a 30-minute period of time. How do we make that fine structure a deterrent to detract from the individuals not complying with the law? And as far as the Department of Transportation, the personnel, it's going to be difficult to sit there and monitor this with the many locations we have throughout the city. I don't care how many traffic officers you have citywide, all the other responsibilities and priorities that they have, this is not going to be enforced as we wish it to be enforced. How do we increase that fine to make that fine a deterrent? You drive in a carpool lane, you're going to pay a lot of money. You run a red light, you're going to pay a lot of money. You go speeding, you're going to pay a lot of money. How do we make this a deterrent? Because $45, really, is a joke when it comes to a fine for these individuals that continually violate. And Chief Price, you said, this is just the cost of doing business. A $45 ticket, they don't really care about. It's a joke. It's a waste of our time and our effort. So how do we create a fine structure, Shelley, to make this effective in really sending the message that you're going to comply with the law?
As I indicated to Councilwoman Hahn, there are rare, but several violations of the municipal code where we have set up what we call tiered penalties. So we start out with what is otherwise a typical penalty. It's 45, 50, 60 dollars. But if an individual, if a registered owner violates that same law within a 12-month period-
Within a 12-month period.
Within a 12-month period. For each second or third offense within the 12-month period, the fine escalates.
To what level?
At least double.
Okay, so $90. Still, that's nothing. How do we start out with a sufficient fine to make this effective for everyone involved? How do we, is there any state prohibition at this time that would restrict us from making this fine a significant amount of money? You're going to pay more for a stop in a no-stopping zone or parking tickets. Councilmember Gruel had a motion, I don't know if it passed, Wendy, about $150 for stopping in some of these areas that we have, the traffic congestion. Double's not even enough when you're talking about how much revenue they're bringing in, selling their products and interfering with the quality of life. How do we put that into structure now? And how do we track that with the number of violations? Is there a separate tracking system that we're going to be able to follow up with this?
The, our contractor, ACS, that processes all of our parking violations, has programming that specifically tracks multiple violations for the same offense within that 12-year period for those offenses where we have tiered. Now, the vehicle code requires that all cities within, one county as an example, have substantially similar fines for the same sorts of violations. So we would have to ascertain that catering truck violations were not substantially different from any new proposed fine. But the way to really, really enforce and make it painful for violators would be to tier the violations. Because if you keep getting $100 or $150 fine every single day for 11 out of your 12 months, that becomes much more than merely a cost of doing business. So, again, it really depends on the will of the council. If there is direction for us to go back and come back with a tiered penalty portion of this ordinance, we will be happy to do that, and we will return to the floor of council with those changes.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, then, that we do that, that we pursue the tiered level, and we make that fine a substantial fine to detract from what these folks are doing. And if I can get a second on that, Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, seconds.
That will get the message across, because clearly, as everyone knows, $45 to these folks is absolutely ridiculous, and that's why they keep on doing it. And as far as Chief Price and the resource you have, I know they're stretched. I know we've got massive traffic congestion and people parking and no parking, stopping, et cetera, private parking lots, et cetera. So I don't know what kind of task force you can assign to this, but I know in my district, as well as many districts around the city, it's a problem that doesn't go away, and the people, the businesses in particular, complain and don't think we're doing anything about it. So obviously, we want to do something, and if we can have that tiered section back. Another thing I'd just like to add on to, is there something we can put in here if they don't pay those tickets within a certain amount of time, like we do? You have, I think, seven unpaid parking tickets, you can get your car impounded. If they don't pay those, is there something, Chief Price, we can do on that arena? Is it seven parking violations they haven't paid that you can impound it?
Currently, it's five or more unpaid parking violations.
I'd also like to look at that, to see if they don't pay those tickets, five or more, then that vehicle could also, that trailer, whatever the, they call it, the roach coats in the trade, can be impounded. I mean, to make it, we want to send a strong message, you're going to comply, or we're going to have the consequences.
The existing law does allow that, and any time a traffic officer enters a license plate into his handheld computer device, it is automatically bounced against the unpaid citation file. And if he gets a notice or a beep, actually, what he'll receive on the device, that there are five or more unpaid citations, we take that vehicle into custody until those citations have been satisfied.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, for your patience.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl is next, followed by Ms. Gruel, and then the Big L, Tom Lavange, and Ms. Hahn.
I learned something new, a roach coach.
I didn't think-
That's very interesting. First, I want to thank Janice Hahn for her leadership. Once again, she's head of us all, and we're all with you on this one. We're all going to vote for this. Two things I got to ask you. Let me just read what it says. "The City Attorney Transmittal states that this ordinance tightens the regulation of catering truck parking by requiring longer periods of time before which trucks may return to a previous location. The ordinance requires that if a catering truck is parked in a residential area, it must move location a half a mile radius after 30 minutes. The same requirement is made after 60 minutes in a commercial area." That's what we're approving today. How do we enforce that?
I think Chief Price can talk about what the actual technique for enforcing it is. But what this ordinance does is it additionally requires that catering trucks stay away at least as long as the period of time where they were allowed to park in the first place.
Right. Now, how do we get the message out, Chief, to the community? Not only the catering trucks, but to residents who see it in their street and want to figure out what to do about it?
Well, if you call 311 about the problem, they will transfer you to our department, and we will have a customer service rep or a radio operator that's capable of explaining what we can do under the law. And I believe earlier you asked, how will we enforce? Well, in our handheld computers, which we issue citations with, there's a feature that will allow us to enter the vehicle's license plate and the position of the valve stem on one of the vehicle's tires. And that information is recorded into the handheld. After the elapsed timeframe, the officer will return to the location, and if he observes the same license plate and that valve stem in the same position, he knows that that vehicle's in violation. How will we get the word out? The typical way that we get the word out is through our meetings with community groups, such as Neighborhood Watch groups. We regularly attend merchant association group meetings. We would also provide information to the council offices, the field offices, as well as, in some instances, we've even posted notices in public libraries, so that the word gets out that this ordinance is in effect and that we're available to provide that service.
Glad to hear that. Now, the catering truck business requires licensing, don't they?
Yes, sir.
County health permits.
Is it possible to grab the county health permits for those who do it in the city of LA and send them all a registered letter and say, "This is the new law that goes into effect, therefore you must abide by it"? Can we do that?
It would be possible. I don't know what the county records look like. There is a, I believe there is a catering truck association, and that probably is the most effective way to communicate the tightening in the ordinance.
Great. So we look forward to you doing that, and maybe you come before Ms. Hahn or before Transportation, because it came before us. And let us know how far out you've put the reach so that the public understands, the people with the catering truck understands, that this is the law. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Ms. Hahn, recognizing her for her leadership on this. I talked about wanting to look also at some of our ice cream trucks, where we've had some problems, but they said this ordinance wouldn't reflect, wouldn't be able to do that. But we will look in the future, because we've had problems with ice cream trucks who have also caused some of the problems and safety issues around our communities for our children. I just want to ask one question, and again, I wholeheartedly support Ms. Hahn. This went through our committee just last week, and the importance, and the importance, I think, that Mr. Zine talked about and Ms. Hahn, is the tiering, making it more painful. Whether it is our, now we're proposing an anti-grid lock zone, whether it is catering, whatever it is, people are not getting the message, and we have to make it more painful for them. My question is, can you go ahead and implement the ordinance that exists that Ms. Hahn's been waiting for a long time for, without having the tiered yet, just to go ahead and begin that process now? Because I don't think, I'm not, want to hold it up while we're waiting to figure out what the other cost would be, but to go ahead and implement this immediately and then add to it.
In fact, we would suggest you do that, that the council pass the ordinance that's currently here. What I will do is open up, if you will, a new file that will direct myself to craft an ordinance directed at tiering this new violation. And I will be happy to come back to Transportation Committee so that it can be reviewed there and back to full council with that new ordinance, which increases the penalties for this one.
Okay. And Ms. Hahn, I think what we'll do is we'll ask the city attorney to come back within 30 days. That will be part of this motion, to have it come back to Transportation in 30 days, because it should be an easy ordinance to amend. Okay?
That way, you at least have the new regulations on the books.
Highest possible that we can do under state law, Mr. Zine says, and I agree.
We will look-
Thank you, Mr. President.
We will look into doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Lavange is our next speaker, to be followed by Ms. Hahn. Mr. Lavange.
Thank you. Chief Price, how long have you been on the Department of Transportation?
33 years, sir.
33 years. Do you remember this problem as you first got on the job?
Yes, sir.
It's a constant problem. There is an association, and hopefully, it could be, work with them. But I think we have to get tough, and I'm looking at the counselor. Mr. Zine put in a motion, seconded by Ms. Hahn, to upgrade. What are we going to do? Can we do that right now on first reading? The upgrade the fines?
I think procedurally, what we would recommend is that the council pass the ordinance as presented today. I think there are still 12 members present, so we could actually pass that ordinance. What my office will do is return within 30 days to the Transportation Committee with an additional ordinance, which increases and tiers the penalties.
You can't do that, like, right now? I mean, we're here together.
We would have to prepare the ordinance.
Okay, you can't just add it? There's no fine in this ordinance right now?
It is a standard fine, not a tiered fine.
Mm-hmm. Well, what if we just raised it? It's 371 if you violate the carpool lane on state highways. What if we just picked a number? Would that be fair?
As I indicated, state law requires that cities not have parking violation fines that are substantially different than those of neighboring jurisdictions within the same county. So what we will do is, we will survey all the jurisdictions within LA County with respect to catering truck violations, and we will try to present ones that are-
Why don't you do this? Why don't you look at Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, Long Beach, Pasadena, Glendale, just those five cities? You know, they don't have to go everywhere, and see what they do, because I don't see catering trucks in these areas as much as I see them in our area. So if you look at those five cities and then come back, because I think, I want to be fair to the catering truck industry, because there is something they provide, sometimes there's large construction projects and they bring a hot meal to the working men and women. But at the same time, to sit in front of a business is taking it away from the business that is there seven days a week, 24 hours, paying all the other costs. We should be fair to that. And also, this doesn't address the issue of, but there's a lot of trailers. Have you seen this, Chief Price? Trailers come out at night, and there's a whole kitchen in the back of a trailer. Anybody seen that? Yeah. So I think that, is this addressed that, too? Is this, is this a catering truck, a catering trailer?
Yeah, whatever.
Well, I want to make sure, though. Can we say catering trucks or trailers? Because there's a difference, right?
I think trailers are separately regulated.
Well, all right, they need to be included. So I have a motion to include catering trucks and catering trailers. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. So you've got a little more work, counselor, and-
I don't mind the work. I just want to make sure that anything that we include in the ordinance is legally permissible use. So, again, what we-
Hold my time.
What we would recommend is passing the current ordinance, coming back with some additional suggested penalties, and we will look into the issue of trailers, because I think I would want to talk to you and your staff about exactly-
No, it's just big. It's just a trailer, and it's a kitchen, and they do it. Lastly, Mr. CLA, if you could also have your staff look at this as it relates with planning, and, you know, I want to say, people do sell on the street, and that doesn't make sense because of health reasons. I see them sell fruit right above a storm drain, but they sell it. We've got to look at that for the safety, well-being. We haven't talked about other health issues that are very big, that may come to us in this community. So thank you, originally, Ms. Hahn, for putting this in. Mr. Zine, for your expert work as adding to that so we could make it. And Wendy, for your work as the chair. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange. And just before Ms. Hahn to wrap up, Mr. Rosendahl has a quick-
Well, thank you all for this concern. It was clearly not just in my council district that we have problems. You've also experienced it, and hopefully, this new ordinance is a step in the right direction. I will just really admonish the city attorney to not take four years to come back with a tiered fine. We really want you to come back in 30 days. We mean that. We want to put some teeth into this ordinance, and I think what we're hearing today is a $45 fine, even with this new ordinance, could be the cost of doing business for some of these catering trucks. So we really want you to expedite. It shouldn't be that difficult. Colleagues, you supported me when I, remember when we increased the fine for truck violations, which were also, it was like a $50 fine for trucks traveling illegally and over the speed limit in certain streets in Wilmington? We did exactly the same thing. We tiered the fines, first offense 50, second 100, third, I think, 200. So we did that. I would urge you to just look at the language in that ordinance and make it very similar, because I think this will put teeth to it. And colleagues, just to tell you and the public, and I agree on these, some of these trailers that are kitchens that open up, we cannot regulate these if they are on private that are kitchens that opened up, we cannot regulate these if they are on private property. So sometimes you're going to see these catering trucks and these trailer-type kitchens late at night, but they were, they are on people's private property, like a grocery store, or a business. This ordinance does not regulate on private property, so if you have those issues in your district, you might want to meet with that business owner and try to work something out. This is really for catering trucks parked on public streets and at construction sites. So, thank you for your hard work on this, but again, Ms. Smith, we want this back quickly in terms of the tiered fines, and thank you for that suggestion, Councilman Zein. Let's vote for this while we still have 12 members here.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. So we have this as amended, does anybody object to any of those amendments? If not, they'll be accepted as friendly? So with that, Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
The ordinance is before council with the amendments, the amendments do not do anything to the ordinance, so the ordinance can be adopted as is.
Okay, great, well, we'll vote on a single package, this will be moving the ordinance as is forward, and the amendments which require further action. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, send that forth with. Thank you all very much, for two introductions, first, Mr. Rosendahl, and then, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the third graders from Kentwood Elementary School in Westchester to stand up and wave, the cameras are going to grab you, you can watch it tonight on Channel 35. This is the future of America, and we're happy they're here today in the city council chambers. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And Mr. Labange.
Hey, thank you very much. Members, I'd like to just give a shout-out here, someone whose last day of work, and for 25 years he worked in City Hall East as a public service officer, Jim Wells, stand up, Jim, he's with Chief Repoli, 33 years with the Los Angeles City Fire Department. How many have been woken up by Jim, Greg? You get calls, he will keep us informed, give them a big hand, and a formal presentation is forthcoming, but all these years, he's been the person, the connection, from the fire department to the government officials and other liaison officer, as the public information officer. Jim Wells, another hand.
And Mr. Zein.
I just want to comment that I heard this morning on KFWB, Jim, as I was driving in, Dennis Zein over here, Jim, Jim Wells. Don't go running, don't run out that door yet. I heard your comments, the interview on KFWB, and for many, many years, you have been the voice of the LA City Fire Department, your comments about, it's about the firefighters protecting the people of Los Angeles. I don't know if you heard the interview, but if it was live or taped, whatever, but I heard it this morning as I was driving in. You heard, to be commended for your patience that you have displayed in all the tragedies that you've experienced in the broadcast over the local media for all those many, many years. I've looked at you as the PIO over the fire department, in that command center, letting the people of Los Angeles know that everything's going to be okay, and that the residents and the visitors, the businesses are always in good hands with the LA City Fire Department. You've been stellar in your discipline, in your professionalism, in calming people's nerves, when they get upset, when they get worried about fires, about all the incidents that take place for many, many years. You've kept that population of Los Angeles at ease. You've always been behind the scene, I heard that, heard that voice on the radio, Jim Wells, Los Angeles Fire Department, OCD dispatch, I guess that's where they housed you, and you've done a tremendous job. I just want to offer my congratulations. I know that, when I heard it this morning, I called my staff and said, make sure you bring him in for a proper acknowledgement after 33 years with the city fire department. I was surprised to hear you're going to retire, but I wish you well in that, and I guess we'll have a formal presentation down the road, but again, congratulations, and KFWB paid you a good tribute this morning in the broadcast about you and your wonderful career with the LA City Fire Department, so wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, we'd just like to say a few words, if you could.
Sure.
I would just like to say I'm very honored to be in the presence of the city council today. I wondered why I'm here, I've only done a job that was expected of me by the city council through the fire department for the citizens of Los Angeles, and this job has never been about Jim Wells, this job has always been about the city of Los Angeles and its firefighters, and once again, I thank you very much for this opportunity to stand in front of you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wells, thank you for your service, very much appreciate it. If you can take up our next item, please?
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 29, and that's confirmation of Mr. Diego De La Garza to the police permit review panel.
Very patient, Mr. De La Garza, my apologies, we probably should have taken all the commissioners together, and we have this appointment. Okay, does anybody wish to be heard on this? I want to thank you for putting yourself forward, is there anything you'd like to tell the council before we vote?
No, other than I'm really looking forward to being on this commission, I think it's right up my alley. I've done a lot of policy work in the past, and I think this fits in pretty well with what I do.
Thank you, we do have one council member who'd like to give a few comments, Mr. Weezer?
I think you were going to get that off that easy, did you, Diego? I just wanted to mention that I've known Diego for some time, and this is a person that brings some tenacity to every project he's been working on, someone that I highly respect, and I want to thank the mayor for having the wisdom to seek you out, to get involved in the city more than you have been already, and contribute your many talents to this panel. And I mentioned earlier in one of the other commissions, how we look to you to come to the city with any creative ideas that you have, and not just to make this a commission where we, or a review panel, really, here, where you just, we process the things, but really, if there's anything you think the city council should be aware of through the, on how to improve things, please come to us, and I know that anything, everything you've been involved in, you've done a tremendous job, so welcome aboard, and thank you for sitting, serving the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate your work, as you know, and I think your experience speaks well, and another great appointment by Mayor Viera Ricoso, but I just remember the shoes of the people that you're reviewing, you know, and what, how they got to where they are, and be fair, and try to find a solution for everybody to make it work, but to protect the city's interests as you will. Thank you for your service to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, if we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Please give him a round of applause. If we can go out of order, if there's no objection, and we'll take item 45 next, colleagues? There's no objection to that? Okay. 45 has been called special, colleagues, for cards from the public. Like to take those comments first, if there's no objection, is that all right, Mr. Parks? Okay. Like Mr. Hunt to come forward, and then, Mr. Dowd is our second speaker. Is Michael Hunt here?
Yes.
It's item number 45, sir.
All right, all right. It's Jan Perry here, chief in our parks, let me guys, let me show you guys something. This was approved by the courts in Los Angeles, this shirt right here, and it had the First Amendment. It was a political statement, not a hate, or had to do anything with hate. A lot of times, a lot of people misperceive hate from the N-word, from the N-word, to, and really miss the underlying of what people were saying. The whole thing that we were saying is, please don't violate our First Amendment rights. Now, if you don't violate our First Amendment rights, you won't get this kind of stuff. I mean, and it has been proven in the Ninth Circuit already, that you guys are truly violating our rights. Now, don't, we don't want to be down here, we'd rather be working than, than, than down here trying to do some kind of political indictment, or speech, or something like that, but we do have rights too. Now, if the word is in the dictionary, it should be allowed in public form. If the word has anything, as long as it's not direct towards you, or in a negative way, it should be used in a forum. And I was using the word in the content as they arrested me, me, for working, not anybody else, so it wasn't any part of decorum, or anything like that, they arrested me for working. Now, how many people get convicted of working? After you violate their First Amendment rights? So, let's get it together, let's, the word, the words and things like that, they shouldn't be bleaked out, they should really be allowed, so that the people could understand really what's going on. And stop violating people's First Amendment rights, city councils, city, city government, city, and anybody, because I don't hate anybody, I love everybody here, but the way you guys made me feel, is the way I made you guys feel two weeks ago, and you guys didn't like it, because you guys had a forum to bring the 40, it up on agenda, so...
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt.
Just a little respect goes a lot away.
We're going to have Mr. Dowd as our next speaker.
Thank you very much, city council, just wanted to mention a couple of points about the use of racist and abusive language, all because a guy used the word nigger as part of his protest at the, you know, First Amendment rights that were taken away. Now, other people come in here and they say the N-word, you know, I've heard them, they go, the N-word, I mean, really, we're all grown-ups, the N-word? It's on thousands of rap CDs, and that are made in this city, famous rap artists who obviously are well-liked. If we're going to be offended by something, okay, let's be offended by bitches and hoes that are all over those records that are denigrating women. I mean, that's an issue, right? The put-down of women and the erosion of social values, okay? Someone using the word, calling himself a name, isn't really abusive, okay? And it is a First Amendment right. What's really important in this town, as I come in here, everyone's doing 80 mile an hour on the freeway, right? 80, everyone. And I'm like, wait, that says 65 right here, okay? So, something way more constructive would be to pull the speed limit in Los Angeles on the freeway down to 55, at least we get everyone back to 70, and you're going to save 10% of all your fuel bill, and your traffic's going to be so much smoother, because the freeway interchanges cannot handle 80 mile an hour when everyone's changing lanes, right? There's more important issues, honestly, keeping people out of work, keeping the guys who make jewelry, handmade items on the beach, you know, am I making myself clear? Because I kind of get blank looks, but...
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. All right, nobody else wishing to be heard on this, they'll close our public comment on it. I'd like to recognize first, Mr. Parks, to be followed by Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to go back a couple of weeks ago, when we had the first incident of what I thought was totally inappropriate words, and I have to apologize to the public, because I should have jumped up the moment it occurred, but what was really offensive is to go home and see it on television, and now, as it's played over and over again, that people believe we stand for that. And even though we have people that say it's First Amendment, I think the general rule I've tried to use is your First Amendment rights stop when you violate mine. And the issue is, is that, if we go back to the court cases that say, it's not the intent of the person who makes the statement, it's how he or she may inflame those who listen. And I think when we think about words in the dictionary, there's a lot of dictionary words that we don't say in city council. We don't, in my three years, play rap music here. So, we've made some policy decisions about what we want to hear, what we want to say, and we expect a decorum in this chamber. This is the Los Angeles City Council, it is not a playground at Venice, it is not the boardwalk in Venice. If you have an issue to talk about on a lawsuit, you go to court and deal with that. These are things that I think is important for all of us to reflect on, and even though there are people that have less regard for the feelings of others, we should never reduce our regard for the people, the feelings of others. And I think when we go through this process, and what I'd like to do is ask the city staff to come up, because I think we do need a protocol. We need to have something when someone chooses to bring their view and impose it on others, that we should follow the law, and if we're obligated to follow FCC, if there's greater latitude, because we have our own government channel, we should understand that from the city attorney. We should have some wording put on the cards when people write to have public comment, what are the limitations, so they know they do not have a chance to come in and go way beyond. All of us have sat here for years, and heard people talk about things that have no connection with reality. We do that as part of our job. But when someone comes in and creates a conscious effort, whether they believe they are or not, to inflame, and if you want to see does it inflame, there's a councilman sitting at the end of the table that will show you how it will inflame him if it's said again. So if you're talking about violence, if you want to create violence, we can have that. We can have that in the city council chambers, never intended, never conscious, but clearly can provoke people to actions they don't intend to do when they wake up in the morning. So these are things I think we have to be careful of, we don't want to turn our city council meetings into issues to where we see on television and point at other countries where people are punching each other out over something that was said. And I certainly don't want to get to the point at my age of punching out people who visit the city council. And so these are things I think we have to understand, the importance of what people say, and how it affects people. But I think we need to have the staff to come up and talk legally, and also some precautions, so that if we need equipment, if it's legally to do it, that we have a button that allows a one-second delay, or two-second delay, and that we have that ability to do that, we have the legal requirements in the sense of a policy of the city of Los Angeles in this council, what decorum is, and how we treat people, and what we expect people to hear from our deliberations. Those are all things that I think are important, and that's why this motion was brought forward. Maybe we can have the staff come up at this time, and give us some idea in the sense of the legal framework, and also ITA as to ideas about what we have as equipment, and some of the things we need, and certainly, from the president, the council, and we asked as we go through the Rules Committee, what are some of the things we may add to our paperwork, so that we give people what the guidelines are, and I would not, regardless of what that shirt is said today, I would not like my kids or anyone else to see it on television. They go by it at Venice Beach, but they certainly do not have to see it on Channel 35. And so I'd like to ask the city attorney to start this off, and give us some guidance.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. The short answer is that this matter seemed to have come up 10 years ago, Council President Ferraro introduced a motion, and Tony Elfrin from our office submitted a report and a proposed rule, proposed Rule 12. And basically, that rule would have made it clear that members of the public wishing to address the council must avoid language which is insulting, slanderous, profane, or which invades the privacy of any person, and that racial, ethnic, religious, sexist, or similar epithets are not proper at any time. In researching the council file index, this stayed in Rules Committee, I believe in 1999, that was the last appearance of this on the index, so I believe that would be a good start. And the cases upon which Mr. Elfrin relied are still good law. The White case, White versus City of Norwalk, and Kent versus Santa Monica Rent Control Board are still good law, and are still cited by many authorities.
Let me ask you, there was one case that was given to us recently, and I may butcher the name, Chablinsky?
Yeah, in Chablinsky versus State of New Hampshire, that was cited in the White case, and basically, in Chablinsky, somebody was calling a police officer a certain epithet, and he was convicted, and in Chablinsky, the, I'm trying to look here. The Chablinsky, the United States Supreme Court held that the lewd, obscene, the profane, the libelous, and the insulting, or fighting words, and those which by the very utterance inflict injury, or tend to incite an immediate breach of the peace, they have no constitutional protection. So, the first question is whether the word that was used in public comment the last few weeks, whether that would be considered a fighting word. There was a 1992 California appellate case in which the court, the Second District Court of Appeal here in Los Angeles area, stated that, and that was a case in which the plaintiff wanted judicial approval of a legal name change to the N-word. The court held, we opine that men and women of common intelligence would understand that the N-word would likely cause an average addressee to fight. Thus, there is a strong public policy in the state of California to prevent the utterance of fighting words, which tend to incite an immediate breach of the peace.
And also, could you comment on, I think they covered the issue of whether it's the intent of the person or the receiver of the, of the message?
It does not depend on the intent of the person stating the word. In fact, in that same Lee case, they discuss, moreover, third persons, including children hearing the epithet, may be embarrassed, shocked, or offended by simply hearing the word. So, just because, there are certain words that rise to that level, where it doesn't matter what the intent was, they are offending people to such a degree that it may incite other people to fight.
Okay. And maybe we could ask ITA to give us some idea of where we are on, if the issue is, is in the sense of not censoring, but certainly being able to have a time-sensitive as far as broadcast or video, what is it necessary to do that?
Ken Simmons from ITA, councilman, we currently don't have a delay mechanism, we can certainly research that, and I don't, I don't think that will really be the, the issue, we'll just need some policy guidance as to where the meeting will be managed, so that we can have the appropriate mechanism somewhere in the council chambers, so that it could be cut before it's broadcast, but we can certainly get the research done on the mechanism. You should also know that on replays, currently, the policy is that we replay the meeting in its entirety without any editing, so that is another issue that the council has.
I think we have to look at all of that as far as our policy, but I think also, I would think personally, that we'd need to also maintain the complete record, even if we cut material out in case you need it for court or other issues.
Right, I don't think that'll be a problem of also taping in its entirety as well.
Okay. And then let me ask the CLA to comment, and whether we could do something with a short period of time of bringing this information before the Rules Committee.
And after that, our next speaker will be Mr. Rosendahl. And after that, our next speaker will be Mr. Rosendahl.
If the council would like, we can certainly revisit the issue of establishing a council rule. I think that not only have there been First Amendment issues brought up, but I think Brown Act issues as well, and 10 years ago, Mr. Alpern looked at that. Certainly recently, I think there's been some concern about public comments that really had nothing at all to do with the item that was before the council at the time. So my understanding from city attorney is that the council does have the ability to establish protocols and rules for dealing with public comments such as that. So we can work with city attorney and come back to the council with a proposed rule if you'd like.
Okay. And then also, as we go forward, whatever we implement here would be consistent with what our coverage is at commissions and committees?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, and then Mr. Wesson, Mr. Labange, and Ms. Hahn, in that order. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want anybody inciting anything, and I agree with my colleagues, Bernard Parks, on this, but I just talked to the ACLU to ask them a First Amendment question, civil rights aspect, and they basically said just now on the phone, I'm asking them actually to go before the committee and go on the record and do it, but what they were saying is that in public comment, if you don't like what they say in public comment, you obviously can say something afterwards, but you get on a kind of a ground that maybe questions First Amendment rights, though the language might be terrible and offensive, it might be an issue. I personally agree with Bernard Parks that if they used the words that they would use toward gay people, as they do toward African-American people and other people, they're inciting and potentially creating hate crimes. But I want to be on a civil rights level and a First Amendment level on safe grounds. So first thing I'd like is if it goes before the Rules Committee, that we invite the ACLU to at least go on the record and explain either or ups and downs, but I'd like our reaction if we have some sense of it.
I think ACLU would be welcome to give public comment, as long as it's not offensive. And there are First Amendment rights. However, city council meetings and committee meetings, commission meetings, have been designated as either non-public forums or limited public forums. So the council can institute reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, and the Brown Act also dovetails into that, which allows that the city council adopt reasonable regulations. For example, the White case that I mentioned, it's a Ninth Circuit case, 1990 case, and the Ninth Circuit put their stamp of approval on the rules of decorum in Norwalk, which state, "While any meeting of the city council is in session, the following rules of order and decorum shall be observed. Each person who addresses the council shall not make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks on any member of the council staff or general public," and it goes on. That case, the White case, has also been cited in a few unpublished Ninth Circuit opinions. For example, 2003 unpublished opinion, Norris versus the City of Santa Cruz, the court held, although it overturned the matter on other grounds, but it held that the council rule was facially valid, which called for the removal by the sergeant-at-arms of any person who uses language tending to bring the council or any council member into contempt, or any person who interrupts and refuses to keep quiet or otherwise disrupts the proceedings of the council. And then finally, there is, just in January of 2006, the Ninth Circuit in another unpublished opinion, this one out of Oregon, it upheld two different procedural rules. One was prohibiting profane, abusive, or slanderous speech during the public comment portion of board meetings, and the second, which, this may be the reason why it was unpublished, requires public comment speakers to reveal their intended topic and to agree to abide by the rules governing the public comment period. So certainly by the time this gets before Rules Committee, I would be fleshing out all these cases, and we'll have a report to the Rules Committee, which will be a little bit more organized than what I have right here.
And I appreciate what you're doing. And 1999 was the last time there was a discussion of the Ferraro motion and with languishing committee. What happened?
I don't know. I, just this morning, sent an email to the clerk's office asking if I could get the council file pulled out of archives to find out what happened.
Okay. Well, in conclusion, I just want to say that I am in agreement with Mr. Parks about the kind of language, but I want to do what's right from a civil rights perspective. So obviously, I look for the vetting of it, and I look for input from ACLU and others so that we protect the democracy as best we can in public comment. Thank you.
Mr. Wesson is our next speaker, then Mr. Labange and Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I too want to ensure that we protect one's civil rights, but I can say right now, regardless of what we do, I am not going to stand here and let anybody use that word again. Now, it is our responsibility, and I think we do a good job of affording the public the opportunity to come forth and speak their opinion. And I think Chief Parks said it right when he said some of the things actually have no relevance at all where it relates to the item. And I think that in the future, if we're going to have a set of rules, we should adhere to those rules and not allow people to go off, way off course. But we will all fight to make sure individuals have the opportunity to speak their mind. But also, I want to say, you mentioned fighting words. I went to a Catholic high school where I was maybe four or five percent of the people there were African-Americans. Sixty percent of the fights that I've had in my life have been because of that word. I don't know why. I don't know. It just sends chills up my spine, and it makes you do things you maybe don't want to do. When it was said last week, I mean, it was probably one of the first times in my political career that I really didn't know what to do. I really didn't, you know, part of me wanted to join Mr. Parks in jumping over the red cord. Part of me just made me turn my back. Part of me made me walk out. So I think we need to do something because nobody needs to hear that. And I'm talking about, somebody gets up and he talked about rap songs, and nobody should get up in this council chamber and use the B-word, or the W or H-word, or whatever. We should set a decorum for this house that is professional, that is just, that is right, that is fair. And I do not believe that it is fair to have some children, even though if they're children watching Channel 35, Mr. Parks, they must live a boring life, but still, there are children watching 35. They should not be subjected to this or any other kinds of abuse. And for us in this world to think that, hey, things are all great, and that racism is on the downside, and people are being treated fairly, I say to you that I don't believe that to be a fact, that things are just more subtle now. People are more slick in the way that they do things. So I am proud that I joined Mr. Parks in this motion, and what I ask is that we fast-track this, and the only question I want to ask of you, in your opinion, do you believe if we moved forward with some of the things that you suggested, would that be defensible?
I believe so.
Then I say, let's do it. I'm ready to do it right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Labange is our next speaker, and then Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, thank you, and Mr. Wesson, thank you for your remarks. I felt very bad that day because I hadn't heard that word in a public forum or even in any forum in a long time. I know sometimes on television, some comedians use that word, always offensive when I heard that word. I know I talked to you about that, right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, you did.
And now you've got to find out some things to do to make it effective, and I think what we should learn from this unfortunate situation is we have a lot of work to do, and there's things you have to take out of the air to make the breeze move. And bad language, whatever the ACLU thinks, let them think that, Mr. Rosendahl. But if someone comes in and is harmed by someone saying something about somebody, we should stand up and say, don't say that about somebody. We can't change that mind of that individual, but they shouldn't broadcast it on a public phone. And we should respect the rights for people to make their comments, but I think that's the mistake, and I think why there's been a slowing of, and my dad, who died many years ago, taught me a lot of things, but he taught me a lot about people and all the people of this city, and it's how we have to blend together as people and have respect for people. And I don't think you get respect for people when you use foul language or descriptive language that is in the past and archaic. So I just want to stand to ask that you expedite this because it's real important, because it's so harmful. You know, I always think of this, and I thought of you, Jack, because I was at a park, and you know, we ban smoking at parks, and then they play basketball on the corner in Silverlake, Eric, your park, and they miss a basket. You know what they say? And I say, man, they shouldn't say anything, but yet they got free speech. They miss a basket, they say a bad word, and there's a children's play area right there. You know, maybe there should be some respect of a park, a library, a public space that encourages people, you know, to not do that, you know? Because I think that's what, we don't have a discipline as a people to be who we are and to respect other people of all colors, of all faiths, of all sexual orientations, of all the challenges that we have. So I just want to encourage the city attorney to work real hard on this and to come back with something that can be defensible, and encourage all the light of anyone who would want to come in and have their improvement, their thoughts, wherever they meet with the ACLU, but it's the people's microphone that's so important, and the people should never be offended by a microphone, and they're offended by a microphone because of words that someone chose to use. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn is our next speaker, and then Mr. Zahn.
Thank you. I just certainly want to stand up and support this, and it's encouraging to hear from our city attorney that this sort of rules of decorum is something that you think we can have in this distinguished chambers. And I did hear you mention something about children in some way being, what was, what did you say?
They are listening, and it should be taken into consideration when you're talking about certain words, certainly.
Right. And you know, and that's what I think, and I think Ms. Perry chastised the speaker who used that word. You know, this city council chambers is a place where, as you know, every time we meet, we have schoolchildren, we have, we stand and recognize them, we have young ones, we have middle school, we have high school kids, and for that kind of language to be spoken in front of children, I think is extremely offensive, particularly when parents go to great lengths, whether it's what they allow their children to watch on TV, whether it's, now we have certain labels on the music to know whether or not it has graphic language, all of our movies are rated so that parents can cabb that kind of control over their children in terms of what they hear, see, or not. And so for them to think it's an innocent field trip to come down to the city council to see how their government works, and then I can imagine coming home that night and the children say to their parents what they heard in city council chambers, I think for that reason alone, it's important. But I certainly also am sorry for the offensive word and those that were offended by that. And I feel the same way you did, Mr. Parks. It was so shocking, but I wished I'd gotten up and said something that day, and I believe with all my heart that it's going to take courage for us to do this. We should do this, and we should find every means possible to, if a speaker violates that, to shut it off, to have some kind of time delay. It's absolutely not in the spirit of what we do in these chambers. And I will agree, we let speakers, as Mr. Wesson said, speak as much as they want. We allow them to go over their time to finish their thought. Sitting next to a former school board president who said, you know, on the school district, we don't allow a person to speak more than one time on an item, and yet many times we let people speak during public comment on the item, and then when the item comes up, we let them speak. I've gone, I went to the school district and was shocked that they made people call the day before and make an appointment to speak, and they only let seven people speak on an item, and which I found shocking and a real violation of people's constitutional rights. But here on the city council, we go overboard to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. So I think in the spirit, we certainly have a right to ask for some simple decorum for the words that people choose. You know, our neighborhood councils, we recommend that they all sign a code of civility. So if we're asking our neighborhood councils to have some civility in how they conduct their meetings, I certainly think in these chambers, we could do no less.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Zahn, then Mr. Weezer.
I want to take the Jose Weezer motion that you have to call ahead of time, only speak once for a minute. I think we could get done a lot quicker. I know, I know. In seriousness, the issue that's been raised is of concern to me and to all my colleagues, and I'm sure people who watch Channel 35 wonder what we're doing. If you see government in other parts of this world, they get in fistfights, they pound the table, they act in uncivilized fashion. What I'm offended with is to hear some of the comments that are made by individuals that go and speak for whatever they're going to do that offends the public. And I understand the purpose of the ACLU, but I want to remind everyone, the ACLU wants to take God out of country, want to take the cross, which they did on the county seal. I don't really care what the ACLU wants. What I want to do is what's right for the people of Los Angeles and have a proper environment for the people of Los Angeles. And if ACLU wants to challenge that, then we shall challenge that. But I don't think we need to be guided by the ACLU rules when it comes to proper environment and proper respect for human dignity. Mr. Wesson, my colleague who attended Catholic school, as I attended Catholic school, and I was a minority in Catholic school at the same time. I didn't suffer the same consequences that you did, being of the Middle Eastern descent, but now in this day and age, that's happening with Middle Eastern people. But when it comes to this body, what we are here to do is the policy work for the people of Los Angeles, the diversity of Los Angeles. And when I look at the comments and the T-shirt the man wears, which is offensive to me, people on television watching it, they look at this and say, is there any control? Is there any kind of decorum? Is there any kind of respect for human dignity? We talk about human dignity and human rights, but what about right here in the council chambers? And whatever we can do to establish that, that's what we need to do. And if it's challenged, then let it be challenged. But I think the people of the city of Los Angeles, diverse it is, wants us to do what's right for all people and not offend people. And I remind you of the comment made by an individual on the stand that created great uproar in the city of Los Angeles, a person who was a police officer who created great uproar because of a comment that was made. We don't need that kind of comment made here in this public arena. There's a thing about calling about fire in a theater. While we have rules and regulations, we also have common sense, and I think what happens is sometimes we lose some of the common sense, we get bogged down in some of the restrictive rules that we want to have compared to the openness. But when people come up to speak about an issue, speak about that issue in a fashion which they want to do without offending people. But in this last week or so, there's been a lot of people offended. Many of my colleagues have been offended, I've been offended, and we need to take an action to stop that. And I commend Councilmember Parks, who went through the police department many, many years ago when African-Americans didn't have the respect that they have today. And if this body, with the diversity that we have in this body, can't bring that forward and establish the policies and rules, then there's something wrong with us. But I will also emphasize once again, I don't really care if the ACLU accepts this or not. We need to do what's right and respect everyone's rights. Every colleague on this council respects each other, and we do that in the decision-making that we make. We may not agree in every vote, but we respect each other in the diversity that's reflected just here in this particular body of elected officials. So I would hope that we can come up with something and enforce it, and turn off the mic, and if the sergeant-at-arms has to remove the individuals that are offending us and the people of Los Angeles, then take action and bring civility to this particular body that's here. Over $6 billion that we spend with taxpayers' money, it needs to be done in a proper, professional, common sense fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Zahn.
I'm done, Mr. Labange.
You are. Thank you very much. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Can I be Mr. President? Call you Mr. President when you have the time. Mr. President.
Mr. President.
You know, I look forward to getting the city attorney's response to this, and I hope you come back with something that is to the extreme manner possible to enforce what we want to accomplish here. I, to be quite honest with all of you, I still hear this word out there in my community, and even amongst some of my own family members, and I cringe every time I hear it. And I have to go out of my, I don't have to. I want to go out of my way to talk to people, whoever mentions that word to me, and how it's not appropriate, it's not acceptable, and I would not want them to see this body here on TV or even be here and to see that even in these chambers, that word is still being used. And in this chamber, we can regulate it. I try to do it in my own personal life by talking to people whenever I hear it. Here, we have things we can do to regulate it to the most extr- Here, we have things we can do to regulate it to the most extreme possible manner. I look at the images that word brings up to me, and not only for the African-American community, but for all communities, and not only minority communities. That word is reprehensible. It brings up images of hate, images of us not working together to solve the many issues that face this city. And as opposed to us getting more divisive in bringing those types of issues up, let's do what we can to not allow that word to be used in these chambers, to work together, put that ugly history behind us, and say that this city is moving together, moving forward on a collaborative way that we understand one another and know what it means to put that hate behind us. So I hope you come back to us with something that is to the extreme, that we can enforce that, because I know my daughter should not have to listen to that word when his daddy is working to make this city a better place.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, I wanted to speak on this as well because I think this is part of what makes this body pretty unique. We had students that were here from Mr. Smith's district just earlier, and I spoke to them as council president before, and I said, as I always do, this is a temple of democracy. It looks like a church or a synagogue. But instead of worshiping God here, we worship our rights and our basic elemental ability to come and to petition government. There's no place like it. You can't do that at the state level. You can't do that at the federal level. You can't come and hear directly and have that also broadcast in a way that is available for individuals. And that is something that makes this place a privilege to work at. But at the same time, I want to say, before we get into the regulation, we have been able to be good at fighting speech with speech as a first step. And I agree with Mr. Parks. I agree with Mr. Weston. I agree with Ms. Perry. I agree with this entire body who stood up and said, don't use those words here. And we appreciated your apology. But then we heard in public comment today, somebody saying that certain epithets against women were horrible, but then said them. Why would you do that? Don't use those here. Please, do not. No, I'm not looking at you anymore. This is a place where people can, right now, do that. But with children here, with other people watching, we should all have better judgment. And it certainly undermines probably whatever cause you have before us. Secondly, I used to teach about hate speech. When I was in college, I was president of a consortium of over 250 colleges that was dealing with the issue of hate speech. And those who say that free speech is an absolute right is wrong. Let me refer to our own council rules here, colleagues. Council Rule Number Eight says that there is a cumulative total of 10 minutes of public comment. We, as Ms. Hahn pointed out, stretch that because we believe in going beyond what the regulation of that, which has been upheld by law, of only 10 minutes maximum, which would cut a lot of people's ability off to speak, but we embrace that. Number Nine says that nobody of the public is permitted to interrupt a council member directly. That's a limitation on speech. Number Eleven says that folks should address from the center aisle us, right here at the podium, as we do. That's a limitation on speech. You can't necessarily dance right here and say whatever you want. We have a limitation on how we do the decorum, that there are no placards. And indeed, T-shirts are very close to what placards are, and that is something that we have had as well as a limitation. So this doesn't turn into an area where everybody brings signs and starts doing that in the aisleway. Isle Number Thirty-One is a limitation on ourselves, in which it says, colleagues, I would remind us that we shall avoid personality when we debate each other. So there are limitations on speech inside these chambers already. What I would propose is that we look at that decorum, that we do that carefully. We have a Rules and Elections Committee meeting on June 14. And if we send and give the City Attorney some time to further look at that case law and give us a briefing that we can have, bring in the testimony on June 14, and move forward with a policy that will allow us to keep decorum here. Because the moment that we begin to degrade this place is the moment that we begin to degrade democracy, the moment that we begin to degrade ourselves, and the moment that we begin to not be heard. And if there is the belief that free speech is an absolute right, I would challenge you to say, tell me another place where it is more widely practiced than right here inside this temple of democracy. And the best way to preserve that is by moving forward to make sure that the right sort of speech that is expressed here expresses the ideas. When the founding fathers said that we should have that, it was about the ideas, not about the epithets, but about the ideas that are put forward. And there is no idea that can ever be banned from these chambers. But hate speech has no place here.
Mr. Garcetti, thank you. It's June 14. Is that hearing, which is Flag Day, which is a good day? Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss, took your name off. Mr. City Attorney?
If I could just make one comment. In response to Mr. Rosen -- Councilman Rosendahl's inquiry regarding the ACLU, I made a flip comment. And I'm certainly not -- I don't want to have the impression come across that we're running roughshod over the Constitution. And as the -- as we craft a rule, if council members could keep in their minds that a statute must be carefully drawn or be authoritatively construed to punish only unprotected speech and not be susceptible of application to protected expression. That's Gooding versus Wilson, U.S. Supreme Court case in 1972. So we're up for the challenge of crafting this, but we cannot limit all forms of expression, obviously.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say, I appreciate everyone's comments. And I think what's important, and I think a lot of people may not realize, is it's not about what people say at the podium. It's a reflection on us as to what we accept in this body. And for those who came before us and created an image or a decorum in the past, I think it's our obligation to continue that. And none of us should feel that anyone coming to that mic should send a chilling feeling down their spine or a person that may not be as refined start looking for a piece of wire to hurt someone who said something in public. And so I think we need to look at that and realize that we represent 4 million people. And I would like to make a motion today that we take up Mr. Garcetti's comment that June 14, they're going to have a meeting, and Mr. Weston's comment that we facilitate this. And if we can get the City Attorney and ITA and the City Clerk and the CLA all together to, we can bring together some form of a comprehensive document that creates that policy that we get at the committee and before council as quickly as possible, I think we could reserve that level of decorum and not have these kind of breaches in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl?
I just want to thank the City Attorney for clarifying that issue. I don't disagree with what Mr. Garcetti so articulately put in front of us. But I just want to make sure that we're preserving and protecting the Constitution and First Amendment rights. I certainly don't want people using the N-word or, in my particular classification, the words they throw at people like me and so on and so forth. But I want to do what's legal and what's right and what's constitutional and First Amendment. People have given their lives for the notion of freedom and democracy. And if public comment means totally unfettered public comment, that's an issue that we need to vet. I personally don't think it does. I think everybody's right that we can put restrictions on it within the context of what we do here as a body. But I want that vetted. I have a feeling that in 1999, it languished in committee basically because no one really took it to the next level. So I'm hopeful on the 14th of June that we have vetted it with all kinds of groups that believe in civil rights, First Amendment, and Constitution, so that we, as a body, live within the context of our democracy and the laws.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, the item before us will be referred to committee. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So that item, that your last speaker, Mr. Rosendahl, will be referred back to committee. Thank you very much, colleagues. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 30, and that was called special for card from the public.
Item number 30 is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. As we approve this grant for relocating our animal service departments and new animal shelter, new farm caretakers, I would like to especially show my respect and thanksgiving to those whom have worked at day and night in keeping an order of good records and documents of United States of America, housing, renting, and landlord ownership, and paying all their bills on time in each year, in and out. This honor goes first out to Senator Arianna and my in-order landlords, animal protection and protecting our animals more than the people, our eight states leaders, Hawkeye Eight and National Guards and military, anchor Barbara Walter, anchor Ted Koppel, and to all of the public people, Dan Rather, and to all of the public people that are in demand for new job position from Sylvia and Arianna government. It is soon will be less than six months now that our rent will be down in price because of so much in order with now our landlords. Our gas price also will soon be cut down and lower costs because of tenants that have been paying on their bills on time. Again, I would like to thank all of these people and show my appreciation to everyone that is working hard on immigration, borderline, anti-tours, and also dealing with rent, landlord tenants, and is dealing with also those that are trying to find a place that is a bachelor and bachelorette apartment. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll on item number 30. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Next order.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 44, and that was called special by Council Member Labange.
Mr. Labange, item number 44.
Just wanted to alert you to this item here. It's going to go to committee, but we're trying to recruit more police officers, and it's to try to, at the request of the Police Department, have a way for our neighborhood councils or other community associations to be part of the process, that similar to what we have for city employees who recommend a candidate for the Police Department. If a neighborhood council recommends a candidate and is successful, they would be able to get a certain amount of funding, not a bonus, but a finder's bonus, if you could call that, to help recruit LAPD officers. We need men and women for the LAPD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Next items.
Madam President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
The excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, July 7, to leave at noon for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas will be excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, July 14 for city business. That also meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you. We're now going to go in closed session. I would ask the guards to clear the room of those individuals not participating in the closed session. Would also, colleagues, we do have a minimum quorum of 10. So if we could ask everyone, please, to stay here through our executive session. Thank you very much. We have completed our executive session. Madam Clerk?
First item before council is item number 47, and that settlement in the case of Topanga Press versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $134,000.
Need to open the roll on that item? Or just report our vote? Open the roll. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
Next item is item number 48, and that settlement in the case of Jennifer Webb versus City et al., and the amount is $85,000, plus various settlement terms and conditions, including her reinstatement.
Madam Clerk, open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Item's been approved.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Colleagues, any announcements today? Mr. Labange.
Tomorrow's June 1, and we're going to have a hike for health, where elementary schools from my district, some 400 students will hike from the Observatory parking lot in Griffin Park up to Mount Hollywood. Animal Services will be there, along with John Mukri, Ed Boak from Animal Services, and others to help celebrate Hike Eat for Health. So we encourage that to spread through all your districts. Hike the beautiful. We've got to watch out for some of the wildlife, including the rattlesnakes and other things that sometimes get in the heat of day. But hike for health.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have an announcement on Saturday, June 3, at 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The 8th District is cosponsoring a energy fair along with the Southern California Gas, the Semper Energy, and the American Association of Blacks in Energy. And they'll hold this at the Constituent Center at 8475 South Vermont. And they'll be talking to constituents about consumer assistance program, energy efficiency program, earthquake preparedness, and employment opportunities. And that's another issue is that if anyone brings their gas bill or their DWP bill, they'll have a legal raffle and may win up to $100 off of their bill.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Zine.
There's no such thing.
Mr. Zine, you have an announcement.
Valley Traffic's going to have a traffic safety fair this Saturday at Warner Center Park. Last year, it was in your district, North Hollywood Park, I believe. And it's going to be conducted this year at Warner Center Park. That's Topanga North at 101 Freeway, 10 o'clock this coming Saturday. LAPD, Valley Traffic, a lot of traffic safety displays, and the public's invited. Again, it's 10 o'clock this Saturday. It'll run for a number of hours, and everyone's invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Any other announcements? If not, colleagues, I do want to mention this evening, Mr. Weston and Mr. Reyes are having a joint meeting of the HCD in Plum at the Valley College regarding condo conversion issues in the city of Los Angeles in my district. So I encourage those that can to attend that meeting this evening. Colleagues, we have lost a quorum, so we will not be able to adjourn any motions today. We will do those on Friday. Thank you very much.